Stand, big flag. Blessings to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic, the righteous, one nation, under God, where the law of liberty and justice are. Everybody please follow heads for a moment. Dear Lord, thank you for this weather you've given us recently. Thank you for our help and our unity. Please watch over us as we try to make decisions that are best for everyone and all. In your name we pray. Get a reading and approval of the minutes from January 3rd.
Motion to approve this on a new.
Motion by Wolf. Second. Second by Stern, discussion. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Okay, approval of the agenda. Need change the directions to the agenda.
Motion by.
Okay, motion by Hatt to approve the agenda.
Second.
Second by Wolf, discussion. All in favor of this agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Foul, same sign. Well, thank you. Alright, 5A. It's an engineer's report. We have Jared and Grant on the computer with us, so Jared, you're up.
Okay, good evening, folks. I'm gonna let Grant go through the quick update on what your three contractors have going on with the water plant. Then I'm gonna go through just a few generic updates, and I think we'll stay on the line through the presentation of the next item, and then we'll either take off or stick around after that. But, go ahead, Grant, give them a rundown.
The only contractor that I've really heard from lately this winter is Tand, and Angelo and I will be in Hazen next Wednesday to meet with Dave and go through the water treatment plant, and then my understanding is they will start work on the water treatment plant, and the rest of them will be coming in the spring.
Perfect.
Any questions? Yeah, so.
Are we just gonna get updates then on our regular meeting? Or are we gonna start having then the weekly meetings?
I guess, I was thinking we probably wouldn't start having those weekly meetings maybe until we have more work going on, but if you think we should, maybe we should just do a call-in for... So just one piece of Tand's contract is gutting the equipment at the treatment plant, and I think they'll get that done ahead of, you know, moving any equipment to town to do water main and things like that. So I'll leave that up to you guys, what you think.
I'm comfortable waiting until spring.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. No need to start now. Let's see, buddy. Anything else? Jared?
Uh, just quick, uh, you know, I've been talking to you somewhat about the SRF programs. Just so everybody's in the loop, it's the beginning of the year, and the Health Department has published their intended use plan, which is like a ranking of their projects. They are offering some communities loan forgiveness or grant money to get their projects done. At this point, it's kind of like their regular allocation of funds, and what we do expect is that additional communities will get offered... Sorry, you were not one of those communities that got offered anything yet. Well, what we have been hearing is that as they've... They're getting ARPA and COVID and dollars in that have the federal strings attached to them, so there will be another round of loan forgiveness. Just to keep you in the loop or remind you, you know, on the water side, we've got meters that we've put on the priority list trying to get some loan forgiveness dollars for, and then we've got some sewer lining that should be done that is on the list. These are all kind of wish list things. I don't think they're super critical, but if you do get offered some loan forgiveness, then you have to make some decisions at that point if something you want to do or not. But that's the only update as far as funding goes. Otherwise, I think we'll sit tight and wait for construction to start, and I'll just listen in on the next item, and stick around as long as you want.
Okay. Thanks, guys. Anybody need questions or for Grant and Jared?
Nope.
Okay. Alright, 5B. Partners in Planning Grants Go For Work With Brent Bogart. Brent's on the computer here, and you know, this is kind of a joint thing with HCD and the city. So Brent, can you hear us?
I can.
Great, we can hear you loud and clear. Welcome to the meeting. Appreciate you being here with us, and why don't you give us a rundown on what we kind of talked about, you and I, once through the other day, and then well, and Monte, and then we'll, you can fill us in on the rest of it as well, please.
Yeah, so what you have in front of you is the Partners in Planning Grants. It's a rough scope that we put together, started out in conversations with Buster, with HCD. And it's working with the Department of Commerce in their Main Street Initiative. The Partners in Planning Grant allows the communities to apply for grants for both comprehensive plans or economic development strategic plans. And so we started that conversation on the economic development front. It led into the fact that the city of Hazen has not updated its comprehensive plan. In about 12 years was the last plan that was completed. And so I reached out with direction from Mayor and Monte to visit with Jared, which I did for more engineering, because they are your engineers, about working on a scope to combine the two efforts and see if we couldn't get a, update the comprehensive plan and align the strategic plan for economic development to match with that. So that's what we're proposing here. A couple of the timeframes for this is the grant application is due the end of January, and we would work with the city and with Buster to get that grant application submitted. Commerce does not award those grants until May, and so we would have some time then. Basically, we'd just be waiting to see if the city and the Development Corp receives that grant or not, and that from there, that would be the go forward then. We will work with you on getting that grant application, and that's really kind of just our assistance to the city. We're not gonna bill for that until the grant is awarded. This scope here that's in front of you, I haven't had a chance, I did not get a chance to update and get a new one sent to you. This was just the economic development side, so there would be a secondary piece to this. Then I'll work with Jared on his side in regards to the pieces of the comp plan and that review. So this, the bottom line on this isn't, it's probably gonna be a little bit, well, unless Jared is feeling very benevolent, but the reality is that we're probably looking closer to a $40,000 cost scope to get the comprehensive plan updated as well as the strategic plan. And we can work with the city in regards to best ways to do that if, because if it's a partnership between the Development Corporation and the city, you know, do we have a scope with A2S Communications with the Development Corp? And the city has a separate scope for more engineering, but then it's a collaborative effort. We can work on those details with you.
Jared, or, yeah, Jared, are you feeling benevolent?
I probably can't do it for zero.
Alright, okay, here's one double check. Brent, so tell us about the grant and what we'd be, you know, if you're trying about a $40,000 bottom line, the grant would possibly cover how much? Is there kind of a range? Is it, I see 20, 35%?
Yeah, so Hazen is a Main Street community, and so they're required to pay, have a 25% local cost share, and you can receive a grant up to $25,000. So if you had a, if we got the full amount of $25,000, the city then would have to come up with, and the Development Corp come up with that differential of whatever that scope would be. Because unless, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't, I don't believe that Hazen is a Main Street champion community, but you are a Main Street community.
That is.
Yeah, we're a champion.
Yeah, we are, yeah, I thought so too.
Okay, if you're a champion, then the grant award is actually up to $30,000.
So what would you need from us, Brent, other than our blessing to move forward with you filling out the application? Do you need more information from Monte, or you mentioned Jared, he has some that for you as well?
Yeah, what, I will work with Buster and Monte on getting the application filled, helping them get the application filled out. I'll set up some times with them. Really, it's, at this point, it's, it is like what you just said. It is just your blessing for the staff to move forward with filling out this grant application. We'll work with them. I'll work with Jared to make sure that we get the scope defined, so that we, we know what our responsibilities are between the two of us, and then we'll get that application in, and then we'll wait to see when we get that awarded.
Buster, any comments?
No.
Sounds like a good line to me.
Alright, then for, I would, I would, I would change the motion to, to, let them, let Brent and Buster and Jared go forward on the application. Motion by Hatt.
Second, Keller.
Second by Hatt, discussion. So then our grant money then, even if we get, let's say, about $30,000, and the project is only there, I guess, then I guess, then I guess, you know, I guess, about $35,000. So then, so then, all that, all that I guess we would need to pay then, just I guess, the difference, $5,000? Okay, the difference, right, okay. Congratulations. You heard, did you hear that, Brent?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we're, that's correct, right?
Yeah, the, up to the $30,000 grant, it's 20% match or up to $6,000 locally. And then obviously, anything over that $30,000 would also be the city or the Development Corp's responsibility.
Right, okay. Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Roll call.
Hatt.
Aye.
Keller.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Mel.
Aye.
O'Meara.
Aye, motion carried. Okay, thank you, Brent. Appreciate you being here with us, and let us know what you need.
Will do, and I'll see you Thursday. I'll be out for the Vision West Annual Meeting.
Okay, sounds great, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, 5, nope, we're done with 5. 6A, Free Reduce Brent For SNC Hobbies.
I only put the one date in the notes, but they are requesting this again as well for their Great Escape and, yeah, and the Great Escape on April 7th and 8th.
371. Well, there's a fantastic fundraiser, and this is quite an opportunity to be working on this job.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by Hatt, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foul, thank you. Alright, that takes some aids to Mr. Gallin, but that public hearing isn't until 6 o'clock, so we need to, we need to hold off on that. We're gonna jump over that right now and move on to reports, and then we can move back up to Mr. Gallin. So, Water Sewer.
Nothing to report at this time.
Okay. Streets Cemetery.
The line of report is, excuse me, we're doing a little bit of extra scraping on the roads now that it's getting nicer. I haven't had a chance to talk to Dean, but I noticed some, not big pooling, but just gotta keep an eye on our, on our gutters if there's any ice filled up for water flow. Not a ton yet. And I just took up a little minor things to check on the other communities, so.
I know it's still a game of ice edicts that are about an eight-foot wide pool, wide, but then, because that's always an issue right there, and a cry on the west side of that intersection as well.
And it wasn't that, the pool protected the road, that's gotta run like so.
It does, yeah. Yeah.
That's usually a problem this time of year.
Maybe by edicts there, because that's pretty close, I think.
Edicts, it's closer, they probably should go on that, but I would get it to, to bring.
Okay. That'd be great. Actually, I even kind of went around it a little bit, because I don't want my brakes full of water and ice, and so I, I actually went around it. So I was pretty, pretty good at normal, and then. Street Sewer King Thursday?
Yeah.
We ran around the community, either.
No, not at the end of cleaning it up, checking it off, everything. There were a couple of, couple of maintenance items that we need to do on, and we expected that after a little bit. It's a used machine, but.
Yeah.
So far, it's checking out really well.
Fantastic. Yeah. Glad to hear. Bussing Library. I don't have anything. Okay. Police Spider Forestry.
I have nothing today.
Buster.
You heard, you know, Brent mentioned that, I believe, the last annual meetings, this Thursday here at City Hall, so you guys are all invited to attend, and if you're going to attend, we have an RXVP, do, I guess, we probably get a pick on for lunch, but we've got Rockford, Electric is sponsoring the morning pastries, and then Chicago Medical Center is sponsoring the new munchen. And we're kind of, you know, working on it together, Anthony and I, and the hospital books. Program is put together, it's gonna be, probably a fairly heavy dose of energy. A lot of different folks coming into town to talk about, to give a short spiel on our expertise in certain areas, so. So yeah, you're certainly welcome to. The mayor's giving the welcome, so, our president. Our president. So, yeah.
That it?
I'm on it.
Thanks, Buster. Uh, let's see, tomorrow morning, 10 o'clock, I'll be attending the meeting with Coal Country, the Chicago Medical Center, the partners. The survey they did that they had, just got results back, and they're gonna go on to it over those tomorrow with the group. I sent it to Monte, and we'll apply with the next meeting to get more information out. And I even sent it to Brent, because there might be some stuff that could talk in with what they're, with you doing. But it was a pretty comprehensive survey about our health service needs. Not necessarily our community, but more with health services, and it's a, I think there were about 175 Hazen people, and Stan people that filled out the survey, but. Did you, you have a report or did anybody else get? I'll bother you for that, you guys, you guys know the old, you can discuss it next, next. So that's tomorrow morning at 10, and at 11 o'clock, I'm sitting with District 33 Vaking Committee, which I'm on for Republican Committee, and we're, we'll be at, having talk with Mr. Holman tomorrow morning. I'm sure it'll be just a one-sided talk, so as usual, but it's interesting that he's coming on the visit and give us an update on what the Washington DC is thinking about energy, and I'm sure we can ask him some questions, but. That'll be tomorrow morning. Dan, are you gonna be there for that?
Just being aware of that.
That, well, you are now. That's country cattle dealer in the back room. Love it, Mike. Alright, that's all I have. So I take this down to 10A, Planned For Future Propagation. Monte, what do you think about that?
As I said in my notes, they were on a short timeframe, so I did approve that the cost is $153 or.
$155.
$155.
Okay.
That will be in this week's, in addition to this week's paper.
Yes. Alright. Thank you. Okay, if we're down to approval of the bills, any questions on the bills?
Need a couple more on the table here. One to go.
Yeah.
They're less than the estimates, so.
Now, yeah.
What is it, what do you mean? It's called a freight bill for transportation, though.
1800. What do you, 1800, that means 1400.
And that's, okay. Oh, I hear, no.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Wolf. Second, second by Stern, discussion. Roll call.
Wolf. Hatt. Stern.
Aye.
Hatt.
Aye.
Keller.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. The other thing I forgot to mention on my previous report is I did get an email. I got an email from Keith Baines. He's, his family owns the truck stock, this one's of Nandam underneath, and he is, he emailed me saying he's announcing his candidacy tomorrow. He's been running for Republican Senate seat for District 33. So he'll be running against Jessica under the belt. And he did call me today, and there was a brief conversation, but I don't know him, and he was giving a hold of all the executive committee members just to have his himself, and explained that I think he's gonna, he'll have a press release tomorrow, and I think he's gonna contribute. Okay. So we, we have our public hearing at 6 o'clock, so we do need to wait until then, correct, Sat?
Of course.
Well. Right, I'm at 5:10. 5:10 and 4:00. We could go by that clock and that clock, and not that one.
You, that's where your family is at?
This is it. This is it.
Okay.
Well, I'm gonna wait, whether he may, Randy Kristen may be coming as well.
Oh.
He did call me today and have some questions concerning, he talked to you, okay. So at this time, let's reset the regular meeting, and we will reconvene in about five minutes for the public hearing for the, for Mr. Gallin's property. Call the public hearing in order for the movement permit for Mr. Gallin's property. At this time, it would take any public comments opposed or in favor of this movement permit. Any comments?
Opposed.
Mr. Gallin, anything other than that? When you say that, I don't know, I, I don't know why. So if I'm gonna vote, I don't know why I would support.
I got enough problems keeping that road open the way it is, and with the snow blowing in the corners and whatever else it is, and then trying to get the commies to maintain my road even in the summertime is an act of Congress. It's all, all the way, I mean, which is building probably not nothing to do with the summer, but in the winter, nuts.
So he built it on the, on the west side of that road, the inside of that curve is supposed to be the east side of that. supposed to be the east side of that road, or is it?
I have...
Absolutely, yes.
Uh, I wanna remind everyone that thank you for letting me show up here at this hearing, but, uh, I, uh, that's what I do is move snow, seems to be I'm doing a lot of it now. But I would, uh, fill in on that section of road for where the county perhaps doesn't go in there, I, but I know you can ask the county to come in there if you want.
I don't go clean it at all.
But I do.
In the winter, I better go.
Uh, I've, uh, I've been cleaning my road up to the, uh, where I had that little ranchet there, and I certainly wouldn't fall down on the job, uh, if it was causing a problem. And, uh, I would even open up the road where those trees are on the curb there that are still there. And, uh, if, if you were concerned about that, you could cut those trees down, that'd be fine with me. But, uh, just, just to assure you that, uh, I'm a pretty good neighbor, and I'll, uh, I'll do my share of keeping the road open for snow, if that is an issue.
That is an issue, yes, it is.
This year, no. Before year, about five years ago, yes.
I was just gonna ask you, Brent, what's it like now?
Yeah, yeah, Bob Nemmer come out with a snow blower, and we had that chute setting almost straight up, and that, and that one bank was as high as his Bobcat would go. So, I buried my Chevy in the road just up before that corner, so, yeah, she goes in there, did it. My corner included.
There's two sites, Site One and Site Two. Did you get a chance to see those little signs?
I just seen the one in the corner, it's all the same.
Oh, there, there's one, exactly diagonal from that one there, that is closer to, uh, Animal Drive Bridge, and, uh, it's also closer to a transformer. So, uh...
That's the one that's just, Ma- Monty's got the cursor there, that's, that's the second one?
We're talking this area?
Yeah, that, that elevation right there is actually a little bit higher than the, uh... This elevation right, right on this corner here is a little bit higher than, uh, this one over here. And, uh, for me, uh, the idea is to get shelter across the creek, not, not necessarily over there, and if that causes a problem, we just won't go there. Uh, so, uh, unfortunately, you can't cross the creek here. We can think about it in low water, but, uh, it's still not very advised to try to run livestock across there. But, uh, here you'd have to bring them around by the road, and then put them in here, and then they'd be good for a little while on the other side there. But it's such a small amount that, uh, you're gonna have to watch that, the livestock there daily, so, uh...
And as I indicated at our last meeting, I don't like that spot there because of, it could blow and fill it on the road, right there on that intersection. I would be, that'd be my, especially with the northwest, it's not in the wind, if that be, I think, daily, right, free, that, that corner, that intersection would be not the way it is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But here is the big problem, is right, right here where there's a bunch of trees here, and, uh, you could certainly, uh, make an arrangement here, maybe cut those trees down, because they serve no purpose for beauty or whatever you want to have up there, but, uh, there's quite a bit of snow that blows across over there too, I would imagine, so. But otherwise, that's pretty good road, you got it all turnpike and everything, so.
Any other comments from the public? Okay, at this time, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll reopen our regular, regular meeting, and move back to, uh, the moving permit for Mr. Gowans, uh, on, you know, eight A. Any comments or questions from the board? So I guess, even if you were to build something new, would you still need, you know, I guess... You want the board approval, though?
Not necessarily. I mean, it's within our extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction, but we didn't have...
Would you build a permit, that's all? If you need setbacks?
Yeah, it would come to the board again anyway, for construction and we need everything.
On the setbacks, is that why?
Yeah, maybe make sure it's in compliance with the setbacks and stuff, yeah.
And this building that is looking to move, it would be in compliance with setbacks?
Yeah.
Okay. Remind us, Mr. Gowans, what are you gonna do to the building, to this building here?
This building here is gonna sit, uh, so that this side is facing to the south, just kinda like the way it is here, and on the backside over here would be, uh, a place to keep hay, there's also a place inside to keep hay and feed, should they be trapped over there, and there'd be a little row of feed bunks here. So, other than reciting it to look like a little log cabin, if you will, uh, not much is gonna be done to it. I don't believe, there's gonna be no opportunity in there for electricity or water. So, uh, it's just, uh, a fairly neat building to put in that spot so it doesn't become an eyesore. I, I hate eyesore.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions, comments? So I guess the way that I kinda view this is, I mean, this is just the moving permit, so, so even if you were to build new, it's still gonna be the same spot that you lost it, I'm assuming, so, since, since you need setbacks, but... If you were to build new there, Mr. Gowans, would you build on the same exact site?
It, uh, it's got the elevation to build there, and it's, uh, uh, the, the creek right there will not erode the bank there, and it has easy access via their road, but, uh, access and neighbors, uh, are a different thing. I don't want to do anything to offend any neighbor, and so, uh, I won't be pushing anything on anybody, so it'll be, uh, an agreement, that's the way I operate, so, uh... So even if we agree to put it there, uh, it'll be in, uh, cooperation with the neighbors that are objecting to it.
Mr. Gowans, would it be possible to, to place that even a little bit further to the east, or, or does that get it to where it would be starting to go down the decline into the creek?
He's asking, um, would it be possible to move it toward, to the east at all?
Uh, no, not, not in that particular spot. However, you can go to Site Number Two there, that's this one, uh, with no objection whatsoever. It's also easy access, uh, right here, uh, to Animal Drive Bridge, there's a, there's an approach right here already, and, uh, this would require less, less controversy if you want to. Uh, there's also a transformer on this pole that's right here, so you can bring electricity quite readily down to that building if you want lights. But, yeah, if, if this, at this point here, uh, I believe, uh, of course, you know, I can put this building on skids and move it in the wintertime, but it, we don't wanna set it up that way, we want everybody to be happy with it from the get-go. So if I were to build new, I'd put a little structure, uh, right here, you know?
Can you go any further north?
Monty, would you move the cursor to where Mr. Gowans is referring to? Okay, up there?
You mean, mean up there?
Correct, yes.
Yes, you can go within forty feet of the power line that goes there, so I could go, uh, almost a hundred feet further north and get it away from that curb. Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
A hundred feet, you're gonna be right in, right over top of the fence, left.
What if you went, what if you went fifty or seventy-five feet further north, but, would that be better for, of the snow block that they wrote?
Uh, it doesn't matter much, if you're against it, I won't do it.
Any more comments or questions? Okay, um, at this time, roll call. No, we need a, we need a motion before, uh...
So...
Okay, motion by Wolf. Second, second, Mr. Discussion. Roll call.
Wolf.
No.
Stern. Hack.
No.
Taylor.
No.
Over and out.
Yes, motion failed. Uh, so at this time, uh, the moving permit is, uh, not approved, so, um...
There should be some kind of reasoning involved here, I think. There should be some explanation. It's hard to justify one way or another unless there's some, you know, there has to be some substance to that. If you don't do it because of, uh, location, if you don't because of, uh...
Well, I didn't vote, I voted no not because of the snow, because snow can be removed and, and, we didn't put up a building whenever there was gonna be a snow problem, we didn't have to. Um, I, I don't like the location of it. I, I'm opposed to, to, you know, for the tilt, for the, you know, origin on the bottom half, I'd be more with it on the bottom, but, I, I got my part.
Okay, that's what we need, there's some sort of...
Okay, anybody else wanna offer their opinion on why we, we normally don't give opinion when we vote, uh, for, yes, I don't charge.
Well, yes, I think you do, even when you're discussing here.
Okay. Okay, that's true.
There was no discussion.
I would, I would ask here, are you voting for both Sites One and Two, or just Site Two over there by the curbs?
I think this was, well, this is a moving permit, and I was, I thought it was for that site.
That's where I was under the impression.
For the, for the further north side.
But I gave an option, you know, the option is the, the site closer to Animal Drive, so you could approve for there, and not for the other one, you make that very fine.
We could, if, though, you're, you're right, just move to approve the moving permit for Location Number Two. Casey, as you point out, where that location, Mr. Gowans, okay, that location right there, okay?
That's correct.
Okay? Dan, that's the spot that's further south on the...
Yep.
...western intersection. Okay, we have a motion by Stern.
I will second.
And a second by Wolf.
Can we vote on this? Were both sites listed on the moving permit? Can you randomly pick spots and changes?
He did talk about both spots in the last meeting.
He talked about it, but are they on the permit? Don't you have to, like, show it on the permit where you...
Typically says northwest of Animal Drive Bridge.
Okay.
Good, okay, great, good question, Miss Smithy. Uh, we have a motion and a second, and we're discussing.
How many acres is that, Steve, on the outside of Animal Creek?
How many what?
Acres.
Probably about one.
'Cause since I've lived here in the ten years...
Ten acres, sixteen and a half feet wide and a half mile long.
Yep. I've seen two horses on the inside.
Yeah.
And nothing else since I've lived.
They were up against it as well.
Yeah. Okay. And you wouldn't be able to put much more than one or two head of cows in there?
Well, you'd have to just keep them in there by a week, return, and then move them back out there. It's, it's labor intensive.
Right. So my, my point is, is that, I know what you're trying to do, but is it worth doing that for a week at a time for a washer?
Yeah, it's a hobby, you know?
Right.
Okay, I guess that are concerned, if worth it or not.
Right.
Any more discussion? The motion and the second, Monty, roll call.
Stern.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Hack.
No.
Taylor.
Aye.
Over and out.
No. Motion failed, and I voted no because I said no, I said no two weeks ago about that location, and I said no tonight.
You had three eyes.
You got three eyes?
Yeah.
And two no's?
Yeah, two no's.
Okay. Motion, that, does it matter what I think?
And that was, that was my...
The group spoke.
I, I promise you, it won't be an eyesore, that's the best, you know, whether critters are gonna use it.
I, 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 I don't think it'll be an eyesore, I, I believe you, Mr. Gowans?
Yeah.
I just don't want that to be, that's no happening, that's all.
Right now, it's a little of a bird watching station.
Yeah. Good luck, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, um, we already had our approval of bills, so, if there's anything else you guys can think of, being here, thank you. Thanks, Dan.